All right, good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors, our June 3 meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask Craig Slay to pray for us.
Father, we just are so thankful that you are here with us today and providing what we need, everything that we need. Thank you for being great and merciful and loving God toward us. Father, we don't deserve what you give to us as life's grace, but we thank you for it. Father, I thank you that these men will have the wisdom and the sermon that they need. They are asking of you to provide it, and you give it freely when you ask. So, Father, we pray for their wisdom today. I pray, Father, that you would give us a good day today of service for our fellow citizens. And thank you, Lord, that you provide for us, folks that work for the county board, others in our community who protect us every day. And we just so thankful for the Christ.
Amen. All right. Let's go right on into our public comments recognition. Do we have any? Does anybody signed up to have a public comment? All right, okay. What about old business?
I can motion to approve May 6th, May 15th minutes.
It's a move.
All right, I have a motion by Bob, a second by Jared, all in favor. Any against? Motion passes.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Wait, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. I had a question about consent agenda.
Good, turn around.
Automatic, you know, mode here. Look, Wanda, on the number one B, do we transfer money in an amount of $400,000? Is this something we normally, I mean, I say normally, I mean, I guess there's a shortage there. We need to do something to keep to a balance or something?
There is a shortage. Right now, according to law, that's just kind of standard procedure. But if something we're thinking of, we're gonna ask.
Are we talking from a standpoint far as we're running our reserves or are being depleted to cover our costs?
When we talk about renewing that contract, we're really gonna need to look at it first.
Okay, all right. I'll go ahead and make my motions of approval.
All right, hey, can I, let me ask one more question on the same thing. The fire truck, which fire truck is that? Do we know?
That was the one, the second one. It was either Robin Hood or something.
That's the one that we ordered back in.
Yes, it was part of a couple of months ago.
I think Florence got theirs. I hadn't seen a Robin Hood truck yet, so, yeah.
Florence?
Not Florence, Peter Hatchet.
Florence has talked about during the budget process that that money would be transferred.
I guess, is this person a new one or the one we've already had? We've already received it?
We've received it.
Okay.
That's not the one that I had.
I don't know. It could be, yeah.
Is that the one that...
So, we're moving the Grand Gulf money from Grand Gulf Fund to Fire Fund? I think that's just our standard transfer. We knew we were gonna pay for the truck with Grand Gulf money, but I don't think we got the Grand Gulf money until after we had paid for the truck.
Yeah, I was just double checking, we're not, yeah, which truck is it? I mean, are we buying another?
Well, I just saw, remember, we took a picture with Florence, not Florence.
Peter Hatchet.
Peter Hatchet. And I know Robin Hood's got one coming because they built on that new station down there. And then Cleary's got one coming.
No, that's the one, both, but that's the one we're switching.
Yeah.
So, where did we switch it?
Sometime a month or so ago, I asked Brett for a list of the order in which we were, so we just check them off the list as we go through them. I still hadn't seen an order on how we buy them, or when we buy them, or what we bought. Maybe that's just hard to locate, I guess, but I was just trying to figure out which one this is.
Let's get a, let's get an agenda item for the 17th from Fire Coordinator that has a layout of our fired truck purchase rotation.
See, I thought I asked for that about a month or so ago, and...
I thought he gave us something, though. He was here and gave us something, didn't he?
I mean, I asked him for one, and not that that means anything.
Did he?
He was here, and I remember you asking the question. I thought he gave us answers.
No, I said, if you don't mind, send me a list of the process, the order of the trucks, and how we purchase them, and what system we use, and we still hadn't got anything. And I just don't know which truck this is. This is not buying an additional truck, right? This is the two we bought last year? Because then we add the, we added something to buy an additional truck, right?
Same supply.
In October, we're gonna order another one to replace the one that we switched over to from Cleary.
Yeah, but I mean, didn't we order, didn't we authorize to buy an additional one? How do we buy the one for Peter Hatchet? Because there's 32 in the list.
The one for Peter Hatchet, but if, what you want, I think, I think, if I recall, we'll take the one that was going to Cleary.
I can't remember.
And we'll send it to Peter Hatchet. Instead, we went on, bought another one for Peter Hatchet. And then the one Cleary just came in, but now we're moving it over here and ordering them another one for later.
Yeah, I just, I thought we had to...
I think that's the way I remember that.
I can't remember.
I may be wrong, but I think that was it. We talked about switching more.
Because I thought, because I thought, because I thought we added one, because we didn't have Peter Hatchet in there.
We did, we added Peter Hatchet, I believe.
So, is that this?
Yes, this is paying for the Peter Hatchet truck.
That's what this one is?
It's because he got the truck before they got the money. Is that what you were saying a minute ago?
Yes, and our standard, our standard process is we use the Grand Gulf monies that are remitted to us, generally in the neighborhood of $350,000 a year. We use that to buy fire trucks.
Got it.
That's been our standard procedure for many years. So, the transfer from the Grand Gulf Fund to the Fire Fund would be indicative of paying for a truck.
You see, I thought we had in the budget, we were buying two last year. I was, I'm sorry, the current budget, we were in there for two, but we added an additional truck to get the Peter Hatchet truck. I just can't remember. I'm just trying to track it all.
I thought the additional truck was Peter Hatchet.
I can't remember.
That's what I'm thinking, because it came up kind of as an additional. And there was some discussion about bringing it over, taking this one and bringing it over, then it's such, let's just buy, we'll buy them one, leave this one. So, I may be, that's the kind of way I'm thinking. It may be confusing to me, I don't know.
I think the point is, we've already spent the money. We're just covering ourselves with accounting transfer now, so.
But what I'm saying...
Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and, and approve the consent. I don't think it's an issue to...
Right, no, I'm with you on that part.
I think that's Slay to get the information he get now or get it on the agenda for the 17th, but I'll still make that motion, Mr. President, to approve the consent.
Yeah, and I'll second the motion on the consent. That's just one thing I'd like to see. Again, I asked it a month or so ago, not that that means anything, but what I'd like to see is our process in which we have, we create the list to buy fire trucks and priority stuff, not just based on time, but responses, numbers.
All right.
Let's see what information we can get. I've asked Brett if he's in the neighborhood. It's not been...
Maybe he'll answer you.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Daniel, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Knowing the motion passes for the consent agenda. Mr. Sullivan.
Your decision, John. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Bob to approve Mr. Sullivan's petitions, and second by Daniel, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Sorry, Bridget, you're gonna have to come up for this one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Several things this morning. The first item I have is a bid opening for the bridge installation. We received two bids. The first bid, Key LLC, was received electronically. And they've listed out all the components that's required. If there's, it includes installation, the cost of the equipment to do it, no materials The second bid is from Utility Constructors Incorporated.
From who?
Utility Constructors Incorporated. And they've listed out everything as required. And I recommend those be taken under advisement.
So, babe.
All right. Motion.
Second.
By Bob, second, by Jared, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
I got a question. They, who would have done, was it S and S or something? Don't they use a bid?
For the first time, I talked to him Friday afternoon, S and S Dragline, he did not want to bid this time.
Really? Man, he's been doing it forever.
As long as I, the first time since I've been here in 16 years, he's not bid, and he's been prior to that.
I figured the second one's gonna be them, when you said, that's why I said utility. Yeah, okay.
My second item, requesting approval of copier contracts with RICO, renewals for the SO Training Center and the Jail Supervisor's Office.
So, babe.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, and I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Next item, I'm just acknowledge extension of the pest control contract with Pro Maintenance Pest Control through December 31st, 2019. And that's just so we can get in the buildings, and we'll do them all at the same time when we do renewals.
I can't believe we have to save.
Second. I'll make the motion, Jared, second. All in favor?
I have a quick question. I guess the reason doing that is to we get the other buildings online, and then redo everything at the same time?
It's just easier if we do an RFP with all the new buildings at one time.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm good. That's what you...
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Who, who in their right mind names their business Big Ass Solutions?
Well, when we did this initially in 2009, we weren't videoed, and I'm just glad Jay's not here, because I thought I was gonna have to reward him not to say anything when I got that.
That's okay. I try to pick up in his slack whenever he's not, but that just...
Yeah, that's crazy.
I just, I just don't understand.
Well, you won't forgive him, will you, Bob?
You do that, but that's okay. And apparently, that's why he's the only sole source, I guess, that...
Nobody wants to compete for that.
I make a motion to approve the Big Ass Solutions.
Thank you.
Big Ass fans.
I guess you should always say it.
All right, Bob made a motion.
Second.
Jared, second, all in favor.
You go down the bar and you look at them. They're big.
It's an apt description.
I don't know if one would go in this room, the blades.
I don't think so.
I don't either.
Did y'all, y'all voted? The last item, I'm requesting acceptance of the lowest quote from Ronnie Williams, construction in the amount of $43,250.50 for the clearing, rubbing, earthwork for the new Pierce Road Fire Station, and authority to issue the purchase order.
I make motion to approve.
Jared makes motion, Bob seconds, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harrison?
I'd like to motion to approve A, work accomplished from May 19th, work scheduled for June 19th.
Bob makes a motion to approve work accomplished and scheduled for June, and Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
Request approval for utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct fiber optic cable utility along and across Church Flower Lane to be installed between North Shore Parkway and Fan Land Circle.
Hey, isn't that what Ceasefire just put down? What we did with them in that same spot?
They all put in their internet fiber in.
Somebody gonna cut somebody else.
It's coming.
Makes me wanna throw up.
You want me to make that motion for you, then?
Oh, man. All right, I'll make the motion to approve it. Let it be a certainty. Have they sent you the lines on where they want to put them? All that, right on top of the elements?
Well, it's right there beside it, but, you know, I mean, but the problem is, what they show us and where they put them is two different things.
That's exactly what I mean. I've given up on any kind of cooperation with these groups, so just let it turn into war, I think.
I think they've got us. I don't think we have much of an option with the...
We have limited ability to control that.
We just gotta deal with all the problems.
Yeah, we deal with the problems, yeah.
We can issue them a permit, we can monitor it, we can tell them where in the right-of-way they need to be and at what depth, but outside of those limited controls, our options are...
And that's what the problem is. They turn the specs in, and they don't put them where the specs go.
That's correct.
That's where the problem is at. The problem's not with them put, you know what I mean?
And they don't give us sufficient drawings, either.
I mean, the drawings they give us is just something off a computer, it's not actual.
So, I mean, we're just taking best guess scenario with these things.
I think Mike and Tim have done a good job of helping us to sort of streamline things by essentially turning the permit into one to where they are not required to do quite as much technical detail on their drawings, if they will commit to be in the back eight feet, is it eight feet?
Eight feet.
Back eight feet of the right-of-way. So, if they will make that commitment to us, we're in the back eight feet, they're out of our way. And that has seemed to incentivize them to make sure that they're in the back eight feet. If we can get them to do that, we will solve 90% of our issues with them. The best thing about this project, I think, Daniel, is that the Ceasefire, the evidence of where Ceasefire is ought to be pretty fresh.
Still there, yeah.
So, if they're gonna get next to them, then that may help us on this.
Just be sure they got Janice's number. I'm fixing to put them...
I think they all learning a little bit right now, because with these new projects that we're kicking off, they happen to relocate a lot of things that wasn't put where it's supposed to be, so they're, they're learning on the hard side.
I got a motion to approve.
All right, Daniel makes a motion to approve this utility permit. We have a second. I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And this guard C took care of that this morning.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Parker.
I have two items on the agenda. The first item is the Old Magnolia subdivision. This is in Puckett.
Man, that, that in itself speaks volumes. It's a platted subdivision in Puckett.
That's true. Now, we're in a position to recommend approval of the construction drawings, but they don't have any detention. Now, we were charged with reviewing the subdivision plant because they didn't have any regulations. And everything on the plans, as far as we're concerned, is okay, except they don't have any stormwater detention. An engineer for Puckett had informed the engineer that prepared the plans, that detention was not needed in Puckett. So, they don't have any stormwater detention.
I thought it worked out, I may be, I thought there was a discussion on, go ahead.
So, here's the interplay. Obviously, this board, in a typical situation, does not approve subdivision plats for subdivisions that are gonna be placed inside a municipal boundary, right? So, we let Flowood handle their deal, and Pearl, and Brandon, so on and so on. In Puckett's case, we take their road and bridge millage from them, and we take care of their streets. And so, it's a, it's a different setup for Puckett than it is for the other municipalities. And so, because we're responsible for their streets, that means we get to be responsible for any streets inside their platted subdivisions. So, this is an unusual dance that we have to go on. And we're in uncharted territory, since it's the very first subdivision ever inside a Puckett, this is our first opportunity to figure out how this thing's gonna work long-term. It seems to us, out on the county side, the best way for us to handle it is, if it deals for what we're gonna have to be taking care of, streets, curbs, street rights-of-way, then we need to say, and we need to approve it. But if it's outside of our right-of-way, and it's outside of where we will actually operate or can operate legally, then the city of Puckett needs to address those issues. So, there's a, there's a two-handed approach to this that we have to go through. We looked at the streets, the curbs, the gutter, whatever. We looked at that on the plans, and that is satisfactory to us.
Correct.
We are pointing out to Puckett, hey, there's no detention shown on your plan here. And we are raising that issue for them and suggesting to them, they might want to look at that and make sure that there doesn't need to be any detention, but their own engineer is telling the developer and the town, we don't need detention for this development.
That's correct.
So, the runoff you're looking at, and it's creating, is not going to impact our infrastructure?
I really can't, can't answer that. But the regulations that we go by for the county, you know, if you do some development in an area, you're gonna increase the runoff some way or other, so virtually, some type of detention or retention is required on every development. And in this one, since their engineer took the approach that they took, that we don't need any detention in Puckett, then that's where we are.
Based on your plan, is there a feasible way to create a detention area for them? Or is this one of those things where the engineer is saying it, because they ain't got any land to make one?
I don't know if that's the case, no. And it's just a single street subdivision.
It's one street, it's one acre lots, so, yeah, I can understand that consideration of detention may be somewhat lessened in that situation. I'm not an engineer, but obviously, but I'm just going by what I have seen typically in the past. When you get into really dense subdivision developments, detentions, it's a no-brainer.
It comes a lot more.
How many lots?
Twenty.
Twenty lots?
Hmm.
How many, how long is the street?
Ooh, you got that flat.
I assume with 150 feet, probably. You looking at about 2,000 feet of road footage?
Well, it probably have both sides.
Oh, that's dark, gosh. Stepped in that one, about 1,000 there. Did this violate our cool size?
It was pretty close, my recollection. It was right at 1,000 feet from what I recall. That's just, that's off the top of my head.
That's about the limit on a one street. It's about 1,000, 900.
900 feet, yeah. And that's making it crazy, I'm sorry.
The street is about 2,200 feet halfway, if they've got a roundabout entrance, which is the grade, which allows it to be longer than 1,000 feet.
Gotcha.
And it's just basically one street end, lots on both sides. And to be clear, they didn't provide any detention calculation or calculations, and say they didn't need detention based on the calculations. They didn't provide anything related to hydraulic calculations for detention. They just said that Mark Baru, their engineer, said, he had called Hugh, who's Puckett's engineer, and he said detention was not required, so that's how we're doing it. We didn't see any hydraulic calculations.
So, in the conversation you had, has anybody had a conversation with the mayor and the board on this?
Oh, no, sir.
No, not from the county side. Now, we don't know what Hugh has talked to them about.
Well, probably by the time they have problems down there, we would have given them their own streets back to them, and they can deal with all these problems. That's a horrible attitude. You know, who is the developer?
Mark Smith.
Mark Smith. Mark Smith. But they didn't give you any justification that detention was not needed?
They're just, I could say something. I could say anything here.
And therein lies the issue. Where we, where we are limited is, we can write back and say, before we will agree to approve the construction drawings and therefore put ourselves in a position of taking responsibility for the streets, we want you to address the detention issue. That's what y'all have the power to have.
So, in theory, so in theory, they could, in theory, they could provide us documentation based on a study.
Sure.
Says a detention area is not needed, correct?
That's correct.
I think I would like to see that, and let's go, and they will make that decision 30 days, 60 days, as soon as they get it. You know, I'm not trying to be a hard, but if we're, but if we're gonna be taking care of the streets, you know, there's no timeline down the road, would Puckett's gonna take over them? You know, they're gonna sit there and say, by our rules, you know?
Right.
Sure, I agree.
Okay, so if I may suggest a motion to table the approval of the construction drawings for Old Magnolia subdivision until such time as the board has been informed or advised what the situation is with respect to detention.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Bob makes a motion, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have made a motion and passed it to table Old Magnolia subdivision, Puckett, till they come back with something that we can deal with.
When we get something, we'll come back to the board with it.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, second item that I have is Auburn Landing Phase 3A, and we were in a position to recommend the final plat and the letter of credit, but we don't have the letter of credit.
Then we're not gonna do anything. We don't have the letter of credit, then...
That's correct. We thought that maybe it would be brought in here this morning, and it is not. Bart's here, I think, waiting on Bart about it.
We'll wait, we'll wait and act once we get the letter of credit.
And that's fine. My client, he didn't even email Tim a copy of it from the bank until after Ceasefire. And he did not pick up the original.
Yeah, and just...
We're perfectly content with moving that to the next meeting.
Yeah, and understand why, just the history and all the stuff that's gone there.
We certainly understand why.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you need a motion on that, Mr. Slay, or just no action taken?
No, no action taken.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I make a motion, we set the public hearings of A through E for June 17th, Mr. President.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Bob.
You don't want to go A through F?
F is gonna be a different day, Daniel.
Yep. All right, we have a motion by Bob to set the public hearings on A through E, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Item F is to set a public hearing for June 27th, 9:00 a.m. for the Yates Construction Conditional Use Permit, 136 Grantham Farm Road, that's District 1, public hearing. Just need a motion to set it.
We have a motion.
Make the motion to set it.
All right, Bob makes a motion to set. We'll have a second.
Hang on just a minute.
Item G is coming off, Jared, don't be confused.
Okay. Yeah, I was, yeah, okay. What about the other deal?
Item H.
We hadn't got there yet.
Yeah, okay, I got you. All right, that's what's confusing, the G and the F together.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
G is, G was accidentally left on the agenda from a prior agenda.
All right, all right, L, anyway, I'll second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Jared, second to set this public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
As I mentioned, item G, we're gonna take off. That will be heard on, now, on June 27th, so you'll see that one again. Item H is the adoption of a board order that rescinds a prior conditional use permit for mining operations that were approved by administrative review on February the 2nd of 2015 for Cindy Winstead, 2633 Cleary Road, and then you see tax parcel ID number there, and it's authorization of the office of community development to send written notice of the rescinded permit to the property owner.
I make a motion that we rescind this conditional use.
Second.
Bob, second, sit. Any other discussion?
Is there a reason?
Yeah, uh, if, uh, since it was done by administrative review, uh, back in twenty fifteen, it was done at a time when the board's conditions did not include a stop date, Jared. And so, it's basically, it's an unlimited or open permit. And so, as we have gone back and looked, uh, we've decided, since we're trying to establish some time limitations now on our conditional uses, where we find those that appear to be unlimited in time, we wanna rescind those and give the people an opportunity to come back in. And this way, the board has an opportunity to set time limits on it.
So, they're just basically redo, relook at what?
We're gonna give them, they may not want to, but if they choose to apply for a conditional use to continue the use, then they'll be able to come in and, uh, the board will have an opportunity to consider whether or not it's still necessary. And if so, how, what would be the conditions associated with it?
Okay, some flack over that, probably. Okay.
We know that there's gonna be a significant amount of, uh, activity in this area associated with the large state US highway construction project that is ongoing in that particular area. So, this is an opportunity for us to be able to effectively, uh, do what we can to, to, to take care of our, primarily of our county roads.
All right, we have a motion, uh, and Bob, uh, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes, three to one.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm, I'm gonna have need for an executive session on litigation update, and so I just wanted to make you aware of that. And I've got, uh, I've got folks that are gonna be helping us with that coming there on their way that'll be here by ten o'clock.
All right, Ms. Wanda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, item A, approval to accept DEQ Non-Competitive Grant Bulky and Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and authority for the president to execute the documents.
Hey, I'll, I'll make a motion for A and B together. Both of them are basically the same type of grant, right?
Correct.
So, I'll make a motion for A and B together.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Daniel, seconded by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for A and B passes.
Um, item C, new Rankin County misdemeanor facility approval of pay application number sixteen to Flagstar Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents and authority to issue the check. Flagstar requested four additional days to, to be added to their contract due to weather, and that should be, we're recommending four additional days for this. That's JH and H.
Second. Why, second? Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead, I'll prove it.
It's a misdemeanor facility. Did, did, did they tell you our ballpark time completion on the misdemeanor? We heard that too?
It's been done by now supposedly, but, you know.
Where are we at time-wise?
The answer is they did. Carl gave us a completion date, and I don't remember what it was.
I thought it was end of June.
I remember first, Jared, it was around May fourth, fifteen initially. But he said it'll probably be first of June, so, uh, you know, Raymond?
Do, do we know, do we know what the additional days are that we've given the, the misdemeanor facility? I know the courthouse is a circus, but.
There, but there, I mean, with this, there are some legitimate things. There's been some changes.
Orders, equipment or something bad or something.
Maybe even different ceiling tile.
I don't think, I don't think we've given them a lot of days.
We haven't given them a lot.
No, they've been pretty much on track.
Yeah.
I would guess, I'm guessing here, probably thirty would be the most we'd give them.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll get Carl.
I'm, I'm good with them, so.
Yep.
I made that motion, Ms. President.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's go to D.
Okay, um, the new Rankin County Courthouse Facility's Approval of Pay Application Number Twenty-three to Chris Albrecht and Construction Company in the amount of six hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents and authority to issue that check. The contractor has requested eight additional days due to adverse weather conditions. And it is, in the opinion of JH and H, that they are entitled to additional six days as specified in the contract.
We oughta make Carl come and present these agenda items, uh, whenever they want more time.
I'm good for the check, but I, I think Carl can come back and explain the days. If we're gonna do it at a different point.
I mean, I think it's gotta be fairly obvious if he's recommending it. I mean, I don't see Carl getting him jumping out on a limb, but, you know, we need somebody to beat up, and I can't see beating anybody else, so Carl, you know. I mean, I, I don't see Carl.
What's our, what's our total days now? One time it was twenty days we gave them, now we're at six more?
Let, let's start from the beginning, uh, and I'll go through as quickly as I can. Uh, right out of the box, we gave them a pile of days in exchange for a healthy credit. They paid us to give them more days.
Yep.
I wanna say it was a hundred and fifty days, if I recall correctly. So, the original contract was like five hundred and fifty days, and then they got up to seven hundred, somewhere in that range, if I recall correctly, total. They've gotten weather delays, significant weather delays. They've gotten site-related, you know, we had the issue with the city's water pipe. Uh, they had that, that delay. We're up to, in the neighborhood of nine hundred total job days or in the neighborhood of about two hundred add-on days.
You're intentionally trying to make this confusing?
I, no, um, what I'm trying to do is to suggest that, that November timeframe that I've been barking about is.
It's non-existent.
Is probably gonna be much closer than that end of September timeframe that we have, were recently told we could expect.
So, November plus six days now.
Yeah, I, I still think we can get in by.
Do it now?
The Mr. Mayor's four days, right there.
Mm-hmm.
They're real close together.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm not there.
It is lower. I think it's down in the hole a little bit, maybe. Yeah, not to put too fine a point on.
It just didn't cross the street, John.
I've been predicting November.
It rang, it was one across over.
My, my November prediction has been based on the track history of the contractor asking for more days. So, I've just essentially said, when Carl says the contractor's saying end of September, I'm just going two months more.
I'm optimistic for a trial summer.
I think I'm gonna be close. We may get October somehow, but I'm thinking November's gonna be our day.
We're just pushing next year really easy on them.
Yep.
So, we can, we can do the groundbreaking ceremony, I mean, that groundbreaking with the opening ceremony and, and my go leading public office reception all at the same time.
Over there, maybe.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, I think it'll all fly like it's supposed to, Jack.
Combine them.
Line it up, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes.
Can we split this? Can we go ahead?
Yes, sir.
With the check and ask Carl or somebody, really, I don't even need an explanation. I just would like to say no.
Yes, sir. Your, your motion would be to approve the payment, to authorize issuance of the check, and to deny the request for additional days.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
All right, I've made the motion, Daniel seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Made a motion and passed to issue check only.
Or you get the days only and no check?
Yeah.
Any combination of that?
We'd do that.
Six days and no check. It's only a hundred thousand a day, right?
Well, it's, it's just gotten, we gotta stop it at some point.
Mr. President, I got additional business, are you doing one?
Um, we, I, I actually.
But I see, but I see our fireman out there, if y'all wanna go.
Craig, you've got one thing that you told me not to let us forget.
Yes, sir.
And that is the Chuck Ainsworth.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, we wanna, they come in late.
Absolutely.
Friday.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, didn't get on.
Y'all wanna take Brett right quick?
Oh, I don't care.
Come on, Brett.
Come on, Brett.
Yeah, my simple question was on the consent. Which truck does this apply to? I was just trying to figure it out. Was asking for a move over of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the Grand Gulf Fund for volunteer fire reimbursement of that Pierce pump, or which truck do you reimburse?
May be easy if you kinda go through what we bought in the last twenty-four months and that kind of thing.
Uh, in the last twenty-four months?
Or whatever, whatever time period.
Okay, we, um, we budgeted for two trucks. We, uh, and then we bought an additional truck. So, as far as the, the, that money goes, I, I, I mean, I don't know where that, that comes from. Or, or, I mean, I hate to say that, I mean, I really don't, that was.
So, do we still have one out there we haven't gotten yet?
Yes, we have one, the, uh, truck for, uh, Shell Road that is coming in that will be in the end of September.
Is that not?
That was, that was the original truck that was budgeted for, um.
Cleary.
For Cleary.
That's right.
We budgeted two trucks. We budgeted a tanker for Robin Hood and a, um, uh, original plan was with the fire station. The, um, fire truck for Cleary, since the station got.
Pushed back.
Just kinda pushed back, uh, we moved that truck to Shell Road. Shell Road was up next for a, for a fire truck. They were behind on doing their run reports, which is required by the state. Since that time, they have actually caught up on all the run reports and are actually putting them in the way they're supposed to. So, we moved that truck from Cleary to Shell Road.
And you, and if, I think one of them, some, I was thinking, trying to think back, what some of the confusion may be that we bought an extra one for Pilahatchee.
Yeah, we did, that's true.
Yeah, that was.
But we put Pilahatchee for a group of rotation.
Yep.
Then, cause they.
Now, I think, I think, I think we took it out of general fund money.
We just bought one, we bought them.
We didn't mess the rotation up.
Bought to buy an additional truck, and I think it was for Pilahatchee instead of moving the Cleary truck.
Yeah, if I remember the conversation.
What's the money, what's this money for?
Uh, Ms. Laura was the one that was doing all that, and I think she said that we had the money from, uh, from Grand Gulf that was, she would move over when the time comes.
For which truck?
For the Pilahatchee trucks, because we did not, yeah, we did not budget for that truck. That was an extra, extra truck budgeted.
How much was the Pilahatchee truck?
Three.
Three forty-two, five hundred.
Okay, three forty-two, five hundred. It's, it's as far as the, you know, the, the money moving from, you know, account to account. I, I mean, I don't, I mean, I was never told about that. I don't, I don't know that. I just know what's in my budget.
All right, do we have some kind of list? I mean, I know I asked this before, but.
I, I, I've emailed it, I don't know why they're just not being emailed out, so I brought copies this morning.
All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, so tell me about the reservoir truck.
All right, the reservoir truck is a.
That stays in the shop, broke all the time?
Yes, sir, it's a two thousand and eight, it is, uh, twenty twenty-three is when it is scheduled to be.
All right, so, so I guess, I guess that's kinda my question. What I can't understand is why, if that truck's broke all the time, why is it so far down the list? Because i- is the only system you've got on rotating trucks through is based on years?
Based on years, that's, I mean, if, if you talk to the rating bureau, that's what they go off of, is years, curb, punct.
I guess my, I guess my thing is, there oughta be a better system in my mind on rotating trucks in or out, other than just the years of purchase. For example, the amount of time in which the truck's used, the call volume on that truck, the wear and tear on that truck. Because we got a truck at the reservoir that's not due to twenty twenty-three, what I can't understand is why are we putting so much money in maintenance on it? Cause it stays tore up, and we're still four years away? How much math is that, four? So, I don't understand.
So, then, and to answer your question, yes, we do, uh, turn around and buy trucks early. Um, back prior to my time, we, Rankin County bought four trucks one year, four trucks one year, four trucks.
But all of those are bought on the mindset of the years, right? We're just going, based on years or?
Yes, yes.
But doesn't it, doesn't, don't you think it makes more sense to put them on a combination of years and the amount of use and wear and tear on the truck? Because if it's just on years, and a truck sits over there at a station and doesn't make but five calls a year for ten years, it's not gonna have the same wear and tear as a truck that's making thirty-five calls in one.
Correct, and that, and that's what we've done. Um, even, I, I go off the years and, and amount of calls, is what we look at. So, with that being said, we've bought two trucks early, um, just to, to break up that rotation, because they, those trucks were, I mean, just being wore out. We were steadily replacing, you know, parts, they were in the shop, stuff like that. And instead of buying a commercial chassis for the reservoir, which, I mean, you're in the fire service, you know, commercial chassis versus custom chassis is two totally different things. Uh, my recommendation would be to buy a, uh, commercial or a custom for the reservoir versus a, uh, commercial. Just because of the, the longevity, the, the runs, that, that kind of stuff.
I'm with you on that.
So, yes.
My problem is why the next replaced truck comes to the reservoir in twenty twenty-three?
It's not gonna be twenty twenty-three. I, I, I know the paperwork says that, I mean, and, and that is going off the years. But as far as that, that truck is just, I mean, now is wore out. That truck could be replaced.
There's no tomorrow.
Right.
All right.
I mean, that, that is in budget items for, I mean, for talks. End of June, whenever we do budget items.
Doesn't the, the reservoir fire have its own taxing district?
They do, they, uh, reservoir fires, um, supply us three of their trucks. We did, the county does supply them with a four truck.
The, the other thing is, we're having them respond outside of that protection district.
That's what I was gonna say, they respond out, they back up Leesburg, they back up Lake Harbor. They, so they, they do help out in the county settings a lot. They run a bunch of calls in the county.
How often do they trade out their three trucks?
Depends. They do it on wear and tear, because of the, I mean, obviously, the, the years aren't gonna play into a factor as much out there because the call volumes must, these guys are making three thousand calls a year. So, the call volume's a little bit different, so they're not gonna really go on the year basis.
Right.
They're gonna go on the wear and tear of the vehicles. So, it can rotate every ten years, eleven years. They've found some deals where they buy some refurbished trucks. That gives them a little bit of extended life on the rating bureau side. So, they've got a different system other than just buying it that way, which is good. But my, my concern is, is that one of those station houses run off that county truck.
Correct.
And it's bad. It's constantly in the shop, it's constantly down. Not only is that's pumper cover, that district, it covers the county side of it. When states broke all the time.
This is a pumping truck that's, that's that we're talking about?
Yeah, so, to me, it makes sense. It may not make sense to anybody else, but that we would play this in more of a game of not just the years, but based on the amount of call volume they make.
And I do the same thing with, like Florence. Florence trucks, I mean, they run, you know, around two thousand calls a year. I mean, they are, is, is busy as everybody, so their truck would actually get replaced, just like the reservoir truck would get replaced.
So, shouldn't that look, shouldn't that reflect that on your sheet that you go by on purchasing trucks?
I think what he's saying is, this is something the rating bureau likes to see.
Well, the rating bureau goes based on years. They don't care anything about call volume.
But is, is the rating bureau kinda saying, uh, we want you to use this system and then, but we justify if we're gonna make an alternative choice to it? So, they, they want to, I guess it's a dog and pony show, you know? Here's, yeah, here's the show, but this is what we're gonna do, because we, because we justify it based on the number of calls.
You have a, a, a commercial truck which has got a, I guess, I call it a shelf life of fifteen years, regardless of how many calls it runs. A commercial truck has twenty. So, that's the recommendations that they go off of.
The, the rating.
We buy.
Yeah, the rating bureau only gives it off years. They don't really care if the call.
Yeah, I get that, yeah, I get that.
But my point is, our system shouldn't be that way.
Well, I, but I'm trying to figure out a way, if you're not careful, then you really create a big political boondoggle or if you start being very subjective in how you approach this. And I can see this getting really nasty, not nasty, but I think it really getting, I would, would you not agree? I mean, you start talking about where the fire trucks are gonna end up, about, you know, and, I don't know. I, I see your point, I do, I mean, I get it, you know? Uh, but I also see the political side of it too, where it's gonna get something, because it has to be some kind of structure.
Does, does Brandon have county trucks?
No, Brandon does not have a county truck.
Do they respond out into the county?
Yes.
Not far, you know, it is a little small area, isn't it? But they're not, they're not down in Robin Hood, I mean, we got a problem down there.
Evergreen? Evergreen? I mean, a lot of these departments that don't respond during the day, Brandon winds out of there, so.
Well, I mean, that's the same way, technically, I think, what is it, Deer Ridge out there, I'll shout out others. That's their designated area they have to cover.
Right.
But you're right, they do respond to the other areas.
The reservoir can't make it to twenty twenty-three based on the numbers with the rating bureau.
Correct.
Rankin County's formula, whatever it is for a fire truck. If you want the reservoir to respond out into the county. Cause they're not gonna have it, the truck's gonna break down, not gonna be available, so.
Yeah, the last time truck went to shop, me and Josh talked, you know, about that, is ordering him a new truck early, just because of the wear and tear on it. He was looking at maybe rotating that truck to some other stations, and, I mean, those stations are just.
They're all, they're all just as hot.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's no.
All right.
All right, I think we worked that, worked it out.
So, do we ever have to ask the question?
He already has a, kinda has a plan too. This is what he has to, this is what his own paper he has to kinda use as a basis. And then he sounded like he's working in some other factors, and they're also, but this is, this is something that if it's asked, this is kinda where it shows up.
Are we doing two a year or one a year?
We've been doing two a year to get off of that four-year rotation.
So, if I look at our list here, and I see Pilahatchee is, would appear to be on the list, is next up, So if I look at our list here and I see Pillahatchee is what appear to be on the list as next up, but they've already been provided a new vehicle.
They've already been provided.
Yeah, so it looks like Star and Res.
Because, because Pillahatchee wasn't even on the list.
Well, and I was looking at that, I, I, yeah.
That's why we had to go Adam.
That's why we had to go Adam.
Well, the reason they weren't on the list was because they chose not to be on the way back.
I think that was the case, that Knox, that Knox said he was going to take care of his own fire protection.
That's right.
When he was doing it, didn't it?
He asked, he said.
Yeah.
Knox came in and said he didn't want a fire truck?
That would have been eight years ago, I guess. Or like, I mean, or, or longer.
It's just, it's just hard to believe that any kind of administrator would say, I don't want the county to buy me a fire truck.
I agree with you.
I've been around, this is year number 11 for me, so that conversation happened before that.
At least 12 years ago.
I mean, think about that for a second. You got, you got a group coming and saying, take what I do. I don't want the county to buy me a fire truck.
That's right.
And I, and I asked, I asked, checked, and that's what I heard.
But he was, he was going out to county.
Daniel?
Yeah.
That same mayor came and said, we don't want your health insurance. I think it's possible.
Oh, I'm just saying, yeah. I'm surprised too, but that's right. So it wasn't like he would, you know, we just weren't letting them have one, they just, they up.
Alright, thank you for coming and providing us that information. Uh, I think now that Craig is stalling for time for his buddies to get here.
Can we make a?
Yeah, yeah.
We had one additional, additional item of business. Which is the, the property on Shiloh Road owned by Mr. Chuck Ainsworth, Charles Ainsworth. Uh, this is a piece of property that is accessed off of Shiloh Road via an easement that goes past the Walters Two Fire Station. Uh, and eases back on in. There's a large parcel of property in the neighborhood of 40 something acres. There has been one ac- action of subdividing that parcel. Mr. Ainsworth sold a three-acre parcel to his sister and brother-in-law. And they have built a house in there. And at the time that that subdividing occurred, we, the board agreed to and chose to put restrictive covenants in place on the entire 40 acres, uh, so that there could be no further subdividing without county authority. Mr. Ainsworth has come back, his son, Corey, is now wanting to purchase, I think it's a four-acre piece, if I remember correctly, Steve. That would be acc, uh, out of the 40-acre block, that would be accessed by the same private easement that goes past the firehouse. So what we're asking, since there's restrictive covenants in place, we're asking the board to allow the lifting of the restrictive covenants to allow this four-acre piece, as you know, we've always had a policy that if it's family, we don't, we try not to stand in the way of them dividing out their parcel. And so this is going from the owner of the property to his son, it's a four-acre block. Uh, and, and the covenants would be lifted for the single purpose of allowing the four-acre carve-out to the son. And then the covenants go right back where they are and there's no further subdividing. So we're asking for permission to allow that to happen.
I make the motion we approve that.
I second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion, well, any opposed? None. Motion passes.
That was to add it to the agenda?
I do, I do.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that was to add.
I have a question, just not specific here, but just in, if we do, we do these kind of things and I understand the family deal. But I know a situation where we did a family thing and they never moved a family in it. But it wasn't a house. I agree. It wasn't a house, but they ended up never moving a family in it, that was just their way of turning it some more.
Circumventing the procedure.
Yeah. So, I mean, what's kind of?
It's, it's, it's the board's discretion to allow it or not. You've got the, you've got the ability to determine, is what I'm being, is the information we're being provided legitimate? And you also have the ability on the backside, that if what you were told to get you to act turns out to be false, it can be rescinded and undone, so that we're not without remedy in that situation here.
The property that, you know, familiar with the property down 469, that they agreed to do just large acre lots. There's no way, so even if a family member comes, they come in and say, I'm going to build one for my son. That one is set up, but we won't do it. We'd let it come back and ask us to do it.
Correct.
Same situation as this.
The way that the language reads in the restrictive covenants, what's designed there is, the board will consider eliminating or lifting the restrictive covenants, just bring the access road up to county standards. And that's, that's all you got to do. Uh, and that's, that's our big hang-up, is, is the state of the access road. Uh, and it, and it not being adequate to handle primarily emergency response.
But if he just wanted to open it up for one more home, which would be, say, a family member on this property we're talking about, he wouldn't have to bring a road up to that one home.
That's correct. And generally, it's the board's discretion. You can say, you know what, we're going to lift it and allow this to happen, recognizing that there's going to be a very limited amount of traffic.
Right.
Right? So it, maybe it doesn't require us to bring it up to county standards.
But he would have to come back here to even do that. And that's what I'm just trying to protect that, those large acre lots, because.
You got it.
What they agreed to.
That's correct.
That was, that was just a question.
And, and, and the kicker here is too, is that even it's family today? Three years from now, it may not be family. I mean, so, but at least I like the fact we've got covenants on record. So it's not a bus turnaround, it's a private road.
That's right.
So at least they can't come to us and say, hey, we didn't know.
We didn't know.
Sorry, that's your attorney's problem when you're closing, didn't disclose that, that's your problem right there. So at least you get some satisfaction there, some cover, that we don't have to take care of that road.
That's right.
So I think we got it added on the agenda.
Before we go further, I don't think, I think he's got a couple of different tracks. I don't think this track is 40 acres.
Okay.
I think it's closer to 24, 5-acre track. Everything else is the same, it's a four-acre chunk, but it, I'm, I was just sitting here trying to remember in the survey that I have done, it really details the four acres, but it doesn't detail the remaining. But I think it was about 24 acres or 25 acres or something. It doesn't change anything other than just correcting the record. So do we have a motion? We have it added.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve.
So, babe.
Second.
Alright, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
If Mr. President provides permission, I'll be going to the chair of roads, that's my agenda item. I mentioned this on Thursday. All I'm looking for, and I, and I think Tim and I talked about it along with Buster briefly a while ago, is I'm trying to get some numbers together, just some rough construction numbers to present to the board for the 17th meeting. You know, so I could, it can be for consideration into the bond project if, if the board so desires. But until I, I need to get, I just need to get it get them. And we're not talking about a serious amount of money they're going to spend. Engineering work is just going to be based on, and it may not cost us anything to this, they're sweet people, you know? Uh, but that's just really what Trail Road is. It's got to bring y'all up to speed on, on what I want that to do. Is Mr. Schley going to add something to that?
I, I do, just to, to clarify, because we, we are talking about a drainage area that bisects Trail Road, and there's a culvert there. And so I just want to bring some clarity to that issue. This is a, it's similar to our Mill Creek ditch situation where we've had federal monies applied. And that's been by way of an agreement. This is a similar project to that. Uh, so for any questions that may be out there in the political world as to why the county is working on a ditch, and I hear that, I, I want it to be clear on the record that we are responsible under a federal program agreement to maintain specific areas of this particular ditch. That makes it unique, that makes it different, it makes it confusing to average citizen out there as to why we are in some ditches doing some work, but we're, we can't get in others. So I wanted that to be clear.
What you said maintained, does that mean we only maintain what we've worked on?
Yes, sir. So the, the entire project, Jared, was laid out. And there is a defined boundary under the project. Not all of that ditch was dealt with at one time, but the boundary of the project is there. So we have the ability to do initial work in the ditch.
It allows us to do initial work?
There's already a jurisdiction.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't think in a wider way it's going to require. The problem is, if you go to Trail Road, go north about six tenths of a, of a mile, you got a rip-rope ditch.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, I'm just asking.
And then the rest of it has just not been finished. So that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, because we're already in that ditch anyway. Because we're obligated because of the fed money. And we have an opportunity here either via the bond money or our drainage district thing, or whatever the board ultimately decides to do down the road to go ahead and address this issue. Brandon has done their part north of the highway. I mean, everything has been pieced together, it just needs to be finished. And I would like the, the Parkers to kind of give me an idea of what it's going to take to finish it, to where it would work, you know, appropriately. So that's kind of.
I just wanted the discussion to, to include that some of what we've got to figure out is, what, what precisely is the scope?
Yes.
Of the federal project itself? Is there going to be a need for additional right-of-way? We don't know the answer to that question yet. But for the purposes of our discussion, I wanted it to be clear on the record, we're in the ditch because we already have obligations to be in the ditch, providing certain maintenance responsibility. That's it. And we just want to make that clear, because it can get really confusing really fast.
Thank you. And then the second thing I got after, it's not on the agenda, is if y'all got a little map there, and I apologize for the photography of it. Here's some more up here, if somebody wants to look at their own copy. Uh, I've been approached by, well, Steve and I have both been at one point in time, but I've been, since this is in my area, I've been approached by, you'll notice Grant's Ferry Parkway north there, I've got it kind of labeled out with a dark line. And then you'll see a bridge over the interstate, and then you'll come down south of the interstate and see a green line to the left, a service road. And what looks like to be an orange line cutting down along the west side of Richland Creek. Uh, kind of tying all the way into just north of Southern Pine there on Lewis Wilson is kind of what they're referring to as phase one, two, and three. Uh, what they're, you know, looking to do. Phase one is really between the interstate and Shiloh Road. Uh, they would create a service road. The bridge is, 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 has to be fed money. Uh, that's just, they're looking at it from a cost standpoint, there's just no way at this point in time to, to make that part of the project. So they're looking to do that. Phase two would be from Shiloh Road down to Lewis Wilson. Uh, and again, as I mentioned, what, two, three weeks ago, this is all inside the city, this is the city of that project. The city, you know, the developers are trying to push and do, and everybody else is trying to push and do. So I'm just kind of making y'all aware again, a little more detail. Uh, be my intention to have Mr. Schley and I, maybe Steve, he so desires, uh, to sit down with the, the city board. They may be discussing this tonight to kind of get some parameters. Uh, so I really don't have anything to offer, other than I think phase one between Shiloh Road and the interstate would cost similar between two to three million, you know? So nobody's talked about who puts what up and how much they put up, or whatever the case may be. I think really the only stipulation we've heard, Steve, is that the right-of-way, at least on the north side, has to be donated uh, from the, the property owner, that we will not participate in a, in a, in a right-of-way acquisition project. But I, and I don't know if that's totally accurate or not, to be honest with you. But I'm just bringing that up for clarification, because I will either address it one way or another on the 17th, uh, when we have our bond hearing. Thank you, unless y'all got a question.
Um, Mike Harrison has something that he wants to put under additional business.
I got a couple of things right quick. I'd like to add, if y'all have permission to bring my two assistants down for one night to the coach next week.
Mm-hmm, makes a good idea. I'm on board.
They're going to stay in your room or?
Yeah, they can.
They're staying with Janice up there.
No, I was, no, really.
Janice has got her, got her place.
That was a joke, but I, you probably are going to have.
We're going, me and Janice talked about it, we're going to.
Yeah, one of them is going to stay in yours, another one, okay.
Stay in Janice's.
I don't know, Steve, I see Chuck over there waiting to jump down, so.
I'm, I'm good with it.
I'm in favor.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
I think it's good they get the, that, because they, like, they never know when you, not where you.
I don't know what night, I want to look at the schedule, what's going on that day with the.
Make it where that day is something they can learn from.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's ready to come.
I mean, the, the highest point of.
Right.
Ms. Janice, you need them to take action?
Do you want them to take action? Yeah. Why don't y'all add that item to the agenda and give your road manager discretion to add two additional attendees to MAS? Uh, his discretion on who those two are, uh, and to provide for their accommodations and to provide for any travel-related expenses. That would be your motion.
Okay, I make the motion.
Alright.
Well, add it to the agenda.
Yep. Alright, I'll second. Jared makes a motion to add it to the agenda. I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to add it.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second it. Jared makes motion to approve that motion we just added. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Alright.
You got something else?
Oh, yes, sir. Got a couple more here.
Please.
Uh, so we've been looking at subdivision, two little subdivisions we got over there off Spillway. One's Camille Trail, and one is Redbud Trail. They're old brick inlets, and they're starting to fall in, collapsing. And it's got some curb and gutter in there. Uh, it's going to be more than just a piecemeal-type project. I mean, it's going to be more than just quotes, something we're going to have to put out for bid. And, uh, what I want to do is get the authorization for engineering service to look at it, put a package together, and let's see what this is going to cost to do.
About what?
Where'd it come from? I mean, there's something, there's, I know.
Something that's been neglected for years. There's two, there's two or three older subdivisions.
You know, we're probably looking at 400, 450,000 dollars.
Can we add?
Y'all, y'all are probably thinking I'm kidding when I make this comment? But what can we do to create an overlaying taxing district on top of the reservoir overlay district? I'm serious. They're, they're nothing but a city trying to escape their thing, you know? And, and, and we need to get some of that money back, because we're taking money out of our three districts. You know, that we got our issues with growth going on too. But this boy really needs to look at seeing what they can do to the reservoir area from a standpoint of, now maybe, you know, that we need to get more money from to help do it, because it's just bleeding us dry.
I agree with you.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm taking it up for you, because there's, there's no end.
I appreciate y'all's sympathy, because I need it.
I'm dead serious about, you know, the, the.
But, no joke, I mean.
Every time we turn around, something's coming up. And it's just going to get worse, because it's an aging infrastructure.
Yeah, there's no question about it, and it's old. 50, 60-year-old infrastructure, and this is one of these, there's two.
That's probably some of the first that was put in up there.
Magnolia and Redwood, all of the same thing, same part. They're a 50, 60-year-old subdivision site where it's all collapsing all around it. And that's not the only ones. I mean, that's just, those are the worst ones that he brought.
The good thing about this one is, is the inlets, the way they designed this, the curb takes water to an inlet. It's not piped from inlet to inlet. It goes to certain drainage areas, so.
This had to be put in in the early 80s, maybe 70s.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
70s on that same time.
So all we got to do is replace the inlet.
And, and the reservoir's the same way. The reservoir drops in almost half of our budget anyway for the whole county, for projects there, 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 and there. So I, I agree with you. I mean, if we keep the reservoir, we keep their money. Hey, sign me up, you know? But that's going to deplete everybody else. Because a large chunk of that money coming into that budget is coming from the reservoir area.
I'm talking about adding a little tax.
To, to pay more.
I'm not talking about diverting.
I know, add more tax to the reservoir. That's a, that's a good point.
I'm confused, you're saying, you're saying.
What do you think, what do you think the percentage of the budget, of the overall budget?
I don't know, I just know, I know a house that's 300,000 here, 300,000 there, basically the tax is the same.
Correct, but do you think there's more than 300,000-dollar houses with reservoir?
Let me, let me ask a, a technical legal question to, to Mr. Moore. Um, are, are you being serious or are you just frustrated?
I'm being serious. I mean, because I mean, the reservoir from the get-go wants everything the city can provide, but they don't want to pay for.
Subdivision, yeah.
And I get that. I get that.
County, uh, services and county expense.
They want, they want all that. And, and, you know, and that's fine, but, you know, correct from wrong, Mr. Sullivan, as those houses, I think, continue to depreciate, that tax revenue keeps going down. I'm sure Daniel was correct, that half our budget comes from up in that area, but a lot of it has.
Yeah.
Huh?
39.4%.
39.4%.
Forty, forty, forty percent.
So, and a lot of that comes from the commercial developments up through there, you know?
Well, some, but to the most part, there's subdivision. So if you wanted to back off the city amenities, what you got to do is you got to stop allowing subdivisions to be built at the reservoir. That's another issue.
I'm, I'm in favor, I don't know why the county too, but that kind of goes against the growth aspect.
We, we got plenty of them, I agree with you on that. But, so what's happened is you get these subdivisions that come in out there, because that's the communities or where they want to live in. And they do, they do believe, they feel like they want the, and the city amenities they're talking about are streets, gutters, curbs, concrete, that type of, that type of infrastructure. So when you approve these developments, that's what you're going to get the responsibility tacked on to it for. So I'm with you. There's a bunch of, and there's more in that area. So you're right, saying a 300,000-dollar home is taxed pretty close to the same. There's additional taxes that are on the reservoir for the fire protection district.
That's right.
And other things that are there. On top of that, they pay more for their fire services out there, emergency response. But for the same point, there's more of those 300,000, 400,000, 500,000-dollar homes, quantity-wise, at the reservoir.
Yes.
So that's, that's kinda where it comes from.
It's either, either you do that or you, you initiate an across-the-board tax increase on everybody to help sustain that and this. I mean, so, I mean, does everybody in the rest of the county, you know, suck it up so we continue to, to, to keep the forty percent happy?
But, but you, but you think forty percent of the overall pot for five inches is a pretty, uh, pretty delicate number?
It does feel, it feels like a large portion of our budget goes to the reservoir. But then when you look at our budget, a large por, portion of our budget comes from the reservoir.
Yeah.
So it, uh, I mean, I think.
It, it would be interesting to look at revenue and expenditure comparisons by district and just see, are we spending forty percent of?
Well, no, we're not.
Yeah.
So, but, and I guess that's a part of why the roads get so bad so quickly. I mean, you look at, you go back to your traffic counts, all right? That, that North Shore and, and Spillway Road area, according to him, touching thirty thousand cars a day at that one spot.
But they also get a lot of the federal money or state money that we, we, they were applying for to go straight to there. Because we, the other places are not, we're not designed or built that way, and so you qualify for them.
But what I'm trying to tell you is, it's not just that they, they don't just appear at that intersection. They come from those subdivisions and neighborhoods that are around it that are getting the same traffic.
I understand. I'm just saying you also qualify for additional funding that nowhere else in the county is, nowhere at all.
Like what?
I don't know, what some of those STP or?
Yeah, Old Fannin was an STP-level project that was probably seventy-five percent federally funded. Is that right? Eighty-twenty? So that, that would be one example.
Then you got like, I don't know, was it Spillway, whether this, this some work there? I forget where they are. I just know when we approve them, NPO, we apply for them. That's the only area that qualifies for them. When we look at, the money's coming available, but you have to meet these, this criteria, and we look around the county. Well, we think we could use it somewhere else, but no.
It, it does balance out. I, I think the point that, that can be made from Jared's comment is that when you get an eighty-twenty federal match like that, then it's a lot easier for us to stomach that a twelve-million-dollar project's going in to help with traffic congestion, and it didn't cost us but three.
See, another, another area on that Bob, on the same point, just on the North Shore, they're putting two hundred more homes in.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, let's just say, for example.
It ain't gonna get better.
That's two per house. So you're gonna drop another four hundred, five hundred people just on that one section coming over Spillway, so. I, I'm with you.
I, I'm with Mr. Slay's suggestion, maybe, you know?
I'd love, I'd love to see it broken down.
Easy work for anybody.
Right.
But just kinda see where the, the, the cost versus, uh, income comes from.
Well, first, I think first step.
That was my favorite part of this road plan. That's why I wanna see this done right here to show you the true need. There's seventy miles of overlay between me and Gaines in the northern part of the reservoir. So that's why I'm rep, so I would love to see us do a study on how much of that forty percent of our budget is spent toward the reservoir.
Yeah, we still have to look at the overall county. Huh? Do what?
Could pick up sales tax, I'm sorry. Right. Different, different chunk of money.
Well, we talked about that one time before. They went through the moon about that.
So do you, do you need a motion to stay? I'd love to see it. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't know.
Either way, we still, we're in the unit system. We have to look at the whole county. I mean, that's, that's part of it.
I just, I'm just, my standpoint, just the seat, standpoint of a taxing district, I mean, if it makes any sense to re, to revamp, take your fire and all that kinda stuff and relook at the whole area up there.
Well, they are paying additional fire already.
Yeah, that's right. I'm talking about that anymore, but get rid of that tax and bring in a different, you know, a, a general assessment tax coming up. I don't know. I mean, I just.
Yeah, when I, when I woke up this morning researching individual taxing districts within a county structure, uh, was, that was not on my agenda, things I'd be working on today, to be honest with you, but. So I, I guess I should've anticipated about anything. So I would have to actually, I, I, there's some first steps in that. Number one, can you, can you even do that?
I feel.
I, I need to look to see if there's legal authority for creating an individual taxing district within a county.
A lot of people in Rankin County, a lot, a lot of people, a lot of people in Rankin County has benefited greatly on the tax money that comes in from the reservoir. From north to south to wherever you wanna get to, they've benefited tremendously on having the reservoir's tax money go into the overall pot.
Right.
Well, in the same way though, I mean, really, all fairness, there's situations where other, the tax dollars from the other county helped, other parts of the county helped.
Mike, you see what you got started?
Help build that too. I mean, it's all, you can't just single out like that. It's all, and I ain't through yet. I appreciate you stirring that pot, yeah, really.
Yeah.
I think Bob had a great idea.
What about the overlay?
Let's just, can we just say?
You can say, hey, you admit it, you can look at Flowood. How much money does Flowood contribute to all that commercial property and their high-end homes they've got in their district?
Not many. They don't have many homes. They only, they only touch about, they only touch about, they only touch about two neighborhoods on twenty-five.
Yeah.
And those are smart all the ones that are there, but, hey, I'm with you. Hey, do you wanna do something on that, Bob? I'm for it a hundred percent.
Let me point one thing out.
Break that down?
The, the zoning overlay doesn't have taxing authority. This is a different animal here.
The only thing the zoning overlay does is parking and signs.
It's geographic, part of reference.
I, I think it's a great idea.
We don't need a motion, do we, for y'all to try to look and see?
No, sir.
What percentage of the taxes, whether no one?
That's just something that I need to take responsibility for as legal counsel. I will start down the road of investigating that.
I like it.
And get some help investigating that and try to figure out where can we go, what, what are the limitations that we foresee legally?
And, 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 and you could show us, and you could show us how much money spent at the reservoir based on forty percent of the money collected.
Yes, sir. If y'all want us to look at the numbers.
It's the unit system. It is not the beat system.
No, I'm a hundred percent.
I'm afraid to look at that.
If that's kinda where you keep leaning, you can't lean into, like, they need a higher percentage because it's the.
Yeah.
Huh?
You just need to break out the municipalities that are already paid and have, that are incorporated.
Sure.
And I said the thirty-nine point four percent, that includes the city of Flowood area that's a district too.
Yeah.
Uh.
It's not, it's gonna be less, but it still will be.
Pretty high.
You take, you take it.
I'll take out the municipalities out of it.
Okay.
I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to know.
He rounded it off, so it's gonna be under forty then.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. What else you got, Mike? You're really helping that up. Thanks.
I vote, Mike.
Can I ask a question?
I think Bob, I think, I think Bob voted.
I think I'm gonna ask for Craig, do I ask?
I think Bob, Bob did that one out of the park for me.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, sure whether we took any action on Mike's request, so.
That's why we just left it there.
Red Bud, Camille.
Mike was asking for a study to figure out how to fix the curbs over there. That's what Mike was asking.
Actually, I think Mike was asking for a design, yeah.
Well, what, I think Steve made a comment. Do you have just a, reach out there number because y'all are saying it's way more than you're gonna bid it?
I'm thinking four to five hundred thousand. It depends on what we run into and what we figure.
Somebody didn't vote for the bond, did you?
Same guy.
Right.
Well, same guy. I may not vote for this. You didn't see me vote yet, eh?
I don't think we need your vote on things.
That's exactly right. Hey, you got, you got the three you want.
These other counties.
You got the three you want.
Just picking at each other. Um, what do you need, Mike? Do we?
I need authorization from Engineering Service to, to either put together a project on this and tell us what it's gonna cost before we go out to bid is what I'd like to do.
Yeah, get a bid estimate.
I'm pressing it to the agenda.
And then we can come back and we'll know what, because we can break, break them down into two parts if we need to. And then, uh, Craig, I'm one of New Jersey's intense help on this one. Uh, the bridge has been impacted again on North Shore, so we got more damage on it. So we've got, done got the point we got fixed.
I understand.
Y'all remember, uh, Josh has been, Tim, you know, it's been, um, is it over a year now?
It's between a year and two years where we had a, we had a vehicle that impacted our bridge abutment on North Shore Causeway. That, the design of North Shore Causeway guard rails is from a time and era that has been changed and adjusted now. So any corrective action that we take to try to repair the bridge guard rails, they have to be brought into compliance with current standards. You can't find a contractor that's willing to go out there and just fix what we have because they know it won't match the existing engineered requirements, okay? So when we look at what we gotta do, we're gonna then impact two things that affect PRV. One is their walking trails. Two is the fact that they've got utilities strung all along that bridge, their own utilities. Sewer line, I think sewer line, and water line boat. That is, that is a big number to move those utilities out of the way so that corrective action can be taken to fix the bridge. The, the first response that we got was, y'all just need to fix your guard rails. Don't worry about our utilities.
Excuse me for interrupting, but you didn't finish the last. Bob made a motion. You didn't have.
Oh.
Yeah, I was wondering, when you got up there, was you fixing intervene on something there about it?
All right, I thought we voted. Don't send over there, mind my own business. All right, let's clean this up. We gotta add it to the.
I made the motion to add the discussion about the subdivisions that he wanted to do, the study. I made the motion to add it to the agenda and then we just moved on, so.
All right.
Well, what we're trying to figure out on that though is what it would cost.
Sit right by.
Not, not, not to do the project.
Right.
But just the cost.
Cost estimate.
I made the, I assume we need to take action?
Yes.
So I made the motion to add that to the agenda.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion to add it to the agenda. Daniel seconds it. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to approve that.
And again, all we're trying to do is identify cost estimates.
That's right.
Right. All right. Bob makes motion. Daniel seconds it. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes to get a cost estimate.
Correct.
All right, switching gears, back on our North Shore Causeway Bridge Guard Rail. Car hits it, tears it up. Essentially, it got repaired as, as good as it could be, but at the time, we dealt with a fence company, a local fence company that is in the guard rail repair business. They told us, we cannot fix this guard rail because to do so will require a significant revision to the layout of this guard rail. It does not meet current standards for guard rails. I'm just using, am I on target here, Tim? All right. I don't know what the standards are. It's some, some sort of highway standard. And that's a fairly significant speed thoroughfare through there, and so that guard rail's design has to meet the speed standards that are on that road. So in order for us to get it up to standard, which PRV wants, we've got to relocate their utilities and potentially take their walking trail out of service. So you can imagine how that conversation went. Essentially, what PRV's position is, it's your road and your guard rail, fix it, but don't touch our bike path and don't touch our utilities.
Which we can't to fix it properly.
We, and that, those two things don't work. They will not harmonize.
Because remember, we've been trying this for three years now.
Yeah, so we went back and said, hey, y'all move your utilities out of our right-of-way and we will then fix the guard rail to meet the required standard.
But we cannot fix it. We can't fix it. It has to come up to standard now.
Yes, that's correct.
We're gonna fix it.
Yeah.
The problem was, we have another wreck this weekend, right?
Correct.
Tears up another section of the guard room.
Correct.
So we've got two locations now it's gotta be fixed rather than just one. Three?
I think we're up to that just being an entire correction project all the way around. It'd be silly for us to change two impact areas and leave the other two out of compliance. So it need, it needs to be its own project. The problem that we're having, and we're making you aware of it, is that we are not getting cooperation, unfortunately, on the relocation of the utilities and on what is about to happen to a bike path slash running path.
Good thing they ended up having a pilot this year. Wouldn't, this is just because I'm not informed, when a car hits our bridge and it tears it up, do we not go after their insurance or whatever?
Usually everybody, you're not gonna get it up. I mean, you're talking, then multiple things done to this way before this board's time has been impacted. You know, trying to get some of that information, but we do on our.
Share the number three years ago we got on fixing the bridge. Tell them how much that was. This is three years ago now.
Where you at, Tim?
I don't remember the number three years ago, but it's about, we actually applied for this under that ERBRF emergency funds several months ago.
Yep.
And it's about two hundred and, two hundred, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to put the, the big, I call them highway impact attenuators, uh, which keeps everything on the surface, keeps utilities where they are. Uh, we've gotta, have to extend some walls so that the, the bike lanes could stay in place. Uh, it's a fairly extensive project if you don't relocate the utilities. If you relocate the utilities, you're just putting in basic guard rail like you do on any bridge.
So the conversation we had before with the board was that we would go discuss this with PRV and look to split costs.
Right.
Between us and PRV in fixing the guard rail. That's the conversation we've had in the past.
I thought we agreed about a hundred and seventy-five thousand or something like that.
We, we did.
It might've been a split part.
They, they did.
Yeah. We offered to write them a check and let them get that handled so that they could deal with their own utilities. Yeah. And with their bike path. The, the complexities are as follows. If we, we could do a, I think we could do a cheaper compliant guard rail system if we didn't have bike paths. Guard rail systems are designed to spread the impact out and flare those guard rails out, and you can't very well do that when you got bike paths. But you're gonna create a big problem if somebody hits one and it goes out into the guard, into the bike path on impact. So you can imagine, you're, the, you, you really narrow down your options on how the guard rail system can be designed. And it appears to me in my non-engineered mind that we're having to circle in the orbit of really expensive guard rail systems.
Correct.
To, to deal with this. So it's a PRV issue because it's their utilities and it's their bike path. So we took the position, here we come, we're gonna contribute to, to fixing your problem, here's a check, and they refused to play ball.
What you're about to say is correct, and there is a system out there, a guard rail that we could do.
Yes.
That's a very expensive system to.
That's correct, yes, sir. That's about the two twenty-five, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
In addition to.
You've got to extend some wall out there to protect the bike path, some, not, not on the, not on the water, but between the bike path and, and the road. Extend it, and then those attenuators are about twenty-five thousand dollars up a corner, so.
Wow.
You know, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars for those estimates. I mean, that's just a rough estimate. They're, they're expensive.
Wow. Well, tell them if they want to fix the guard rails and they, they want to keep their bike path, then they cut us a check for two hundred and fifty thousand for the new system. Well, the difference, the difference between existing, what we would normally do without a bike path, and I assume y'all already thought of that, you know?
And the other issue is those utilities down there. That's the big.
Yes.
You're talking about moving the utilities on to fix some of the stuff, so once you get that, which is all PRV, now it's a whole nother.
Right. If the, if the bike paths weren't there, you couldn't install, what, what, what we're being told by, by the guard rail people, and we agree with them, that you can't install compliant guard rail now without relocating utilities. Uh, and the issue being, they really, you can see where they are under the bridge, but once they get underground, they really don't know where they are. I mean, I get that.
I see.
And, and, and if you happen to hit that ten-inch water main driving a, a, a guard rail post, now you went from two twenty-five to way more, uh, to fix that, so. That's the, so, so you can't without relocating utilities if the bike paths weren't there. You can't.
Yeah, you'd have to relocate the utilities and do away with the bike path to put the lawn expensive one though.
So my question is, what I need is direction from the board on how you want me to have the discussion with PRV and.
You really want me to take?
Yep. I want exactly what you said, because that's what I'm saying.
I want you to repeat what he said then.
Hey, I'm going to. I'm gonna tell you exactly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refrain to those guys exactly what comes out of this meeting. So, yeah.
Go ahead.
Give me your exact talk.
Nah, so I may end up doing business somewhere up there and.
Well, as good, hey, as good as you've been to the reservoir here lately, I think you'll be fine. I'm sure you'll be fine. At countywide election, you'll be good.
I forget about the tax part. You're gonna take the bike lanes and what?
I'm sure they'll be fine.
If we get the Bob Morrow taxing district, we might be able to pay for this guard rail.
I think that, that's good on countywide stuff. I do. What do you want me to tell you?
I don't, you know, I'm not sure. End of the day, how much is it gonna cost us?
How much is it gonna cost to relocate the utilities?
If we did it all, and we, and we give Pearl River a pass on the cost, how much would it cost the county?
Roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I make the motion, we add that to the agenda? Prove it. We're not gonna get the money out of Pearl River, are we?
No, we, I've tried for three years.
Well, then why do we continue going down the road if they're not gonna contribute something?
Well, it, it, it needs to be fixed, right?
It's a life safety, it's, it's a life safety issue to be fixed.
I mean, what they talk back at us, I'm not as good as this Greg is.
Well, how come we can't get something out of insurance companies then?
I think they've been trying, but I mean.
Well, why can't we get something out of insurance companies?
So Jared, what, what we could reasonably expect to get out of the insurance company is how much damage was caused to that existing guard rail. That's not really an issue.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah.
They don't have to pay to bring it up.
No, sir. They do not have to pay to get it up to standards, and that's.
Okay, well, whatever then. If it's ten thousand, twenty thousand.
Right.
Why can't we get something out of them?
One thing that we have not tried, except by indirect communications with PRV, is simply to notify them to relocate their utilities out of our right-of-way so we can proceed with the work.
We, we, I've had that conversation. I mean, unofficially had the conversation to relocate utilities.
Yes.
And that's something I ain't willing to address.
What should happen?
If you're talking about a chunk of change.
What should happen here is PRV should enter into, and in a local agreement with the county, to provide that they will pay the cost, regardless of who ultimately performs it, they will pay the cost to relocate their utilities. That's what needs to happen.
Because we said, we said y'all do it all last time, right?
We, we attempted that, yes, sir.
Give them some of it.
We attempted that.
We were trying to split it.
Yeah. Okay, what if we give them the mon, what if, if they choose not to go with the standard guard rail? I mean, if we pay them money and they put whatever guard, repair whatever guard rail they want up there, would they not be? Huh?
I don't think they can.
Why?
Part of the issue for me, Jared, as legal counsel, is that we are still responsible for the roads. I, I really don't want to turn over the guard rail. To them and say, y'all put whatever guard rail you want. More than likely, they would choose to find somebody to put it back kinda like what it is now, which we know is non-compliant.
I got about fifteen joints of it down at my shop. They can come get it and put it right back up there. I mean, that old stuff, you're right. That's what they're gonna use.
That doesn't solve our problem.
The question is, can we do what we wanna do, a compliant guard rail, relocate the utilities, and keep the bike path? Can that be accomplished? All right. The two fifty does not relocate the utilities.
Okay.
But it can be, that project can be done, we think, without relocating utilities. It's all, all of.
And the bike path stays the same.
The bike path stays the same. It, it is a little bit of change because you're gonna have to extend a wall, but it doesn't affect the bike path. It may have a little different look, but. So it would all be done without moving the utilities. That's why it becomes such an expensive option is because the stuff you do, to not have to move the utilities makes it an expensive project.
What do we do?
My mistake.
Well, we're not sure of some of the things we're gonna run into. Did you say that a minute ago?
Well, we've looked, we've looked at, the two, the two fifty, we've looked at that with the guard rail people. This is doomed. Now, we're gonna go the inexpensive route, put in normal guard rails on our new bridges now, then you have to relocate utilities, and you have to do away with part of the bike path.
Right.
Maybe the bike path completely.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, obviously, as with any project, we're gonna put the utility company on.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, obviously, as with any project, we're gonna put the utility company on notice, here's the project we're doing. If you have utilities in the way.
Relocate.
Relocate them. We don't think they're gonna be.
Just come out of road and bridge.
They got, I mean, when we start digging and building a wall, if they got a line in the way, it's gotta be moved, or, or the project.
I, I would appreciate us allowing Daniel to have, and myself, to have another conversation with PRV. And offer them that in order for us to refrain from asking you to move your loc- your, your utilities and to be able to preserve your bike path, we're gonna need some level of contribution. We can do that by way of interlocal agreement, but that would allow for us to stomach the idea that we're having to spend that much more to, to preserve their ability not to have to relocate utilities and save their bike path.
Didn't we get some NPO money to overlay Spillway, right?
Three hundred thousand? We were at three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's part of the.
Tell them, we'll back off that project. We'll put that one down about ten years from now, you know, put that one way down on the, uh, whatever the civil lake project thing is. Something to get their attention, good grief, I mean.
Well, you're gonna get their attention if we just try to put it in normal compliance, and they gotta move their utilities. Because you're talking about far more money than what that bike thing's gonna cost. You get their attention by basically saying, we're gonna go with the standard run-of-the-mill bridge component walls. And then, so to do that, now I need you to relocate your stuff so we can put our stuff in. We can do it that way. It's just gonna cost them a pile of money, and when that happens, everybody's phone's gonna blow up. Not mine, mine blows up anyway. But y'all's phone's gonna blow up, cause they're not gonna wanna relocate those utilities.
What is it, what would it cost to relocate the utilities?
I haven't run any numbers on it. There, there, I think it's two water lines and at least one force main, and the smallest one's ten inches, some of them are twelve inches.
No, I'm sure it's.
Uh, it's, it's.
You could be looking at, like, one, one, relocate, or, or more.
Or more, I bet you spend more than that, so.
So, you're looking, so you're looking close to between six to seven hundred thousand dollars for this entire project if they have to relocate utilities?
No, sir.
Yeah, but, 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 but remember, you're not gonna have to do that.
You can go with a lesser guardrail system, so.
More expensive system, okay, I'm paying attention now, there we go.
Might have to get flash cards, I think. I hear you, you know?
Way too much stuff.
They haven't put any real money on the table to try to help us with the project.
So, the question is, this is, this is where I need the feedback. Allow me and Slay to go back, try to negotiate some more money to pay for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar guardrail so they don't have to u- utilize or move the utilities. Thus, uh, keep it up, to keep, to keep us from spending the full two fifty, maybe they say we only give you fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand.
Right now, they're not in for anything, right?
They're not in for nothing.
Yeah, yes, uh, essentially, they're not in for much of anything.
They've turned down the last deal we've offered, which was split it.
Correct.
Well, I don't want to pump go too much out of it.
We've been doing this three, it's been going on three years, so.
Yeah.
I'm good on pushing it down the road into three years, honestly, but, why not?
I don't want to be, this makes, man, I know who the president is up there, it makes no sense.
What I'm saying, give us, give us.
I might give y'all the lead way to further negotiate.
Daniel and I will try to make the best deal we can.
Ain't heard, and then we, yeah, I don't think that, I think that's a good idea, to negotiate, renegotiate and look at it. Are, are you done?
I'm done.
Good.
That only took an hour.
Back over there in your chair.
We have, try in them two or nine.
Yeah, I know.
Do you need a motion, or we good on that?
Y'all need to make a motion, discuss the need to go with the executive.
No, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the bridge stuff. You're good, alright.
Alright.
We got a litigation?
Yes, sir.
For personal.
Uh, I don't think it's just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick, no, no, I just stopped.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and to, to discuss the need for executive session.
Alright, Bob makes a motion, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and need for executive session for litigation.
Executive session, everybody.
Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds it, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes, exec session.
The word is, it's laid back down, like for sixty years, they've drained the reservoir to find out the rest of it.
Alright.
To fix your bridge.